Hello, my name is Gabrielle Rayly. I live at 818 Brown Avenue and I have two children that side of school. I'd like to ask the school board to reconsider the decision to remove six days of instruction as part of the back-to-work agreement in the recent teacher's strike. The decision to cut the six days came at the culmination of a rough couple of weeks for all of us. Motions were running high for teachers, for parents, for the board, for community members. You heard from me at the last board meeting about what the six extra days of learning would mean for me and my children, especially to my oldest child who struggles with reading. You heard from parents that night and tonight whose children would be even more severely affected than mine. You are well acquainted with a number of children in our district who receive free and reduced lunch and the six days of food insecurity they will experience with the removal of the extra instructional days in the school calendar. You know that the district incurred a penalty from the state for failing to provide the minimum number of instructional days. You know too that without the six days, 732,000 in teacher salaries won't be circulating in our local economy. That means Galesburg takes a hit economically when we are already struggling. While the school district saves some money in the short run because it doesn't have to pay teachers to instruct our children, Galesburg is hurt in the long run. And beyond even the 732,000, rural sociologists have found that for every dollar that is spent locally in the community, forty-eight to sixty-five percent of those dollars stay in the local community to circulate and recirculate through wages, the purchase of raw materials, and support of other businesses, through donations of cash or kind. So it is not a one-time loss of 732,000 that Galesburg faces, but much more than that. I am at a loss in trying to understand what is gained from the continued removal of these six days. When there are so many positives to our children, our community, and our local economy from having the six days back, what is the reason not to reinstate the state mandated 174 days of instruction? I have read that members of the board may feel they are doing a service to the community in removing six days of instruction because such a penalty will discourage future strikes by our teachers. As a researcher and teacher of labor history, I can say that this is not what is likely to occur. In fact, many sociologists of work have found the opposite. Unity measures in return-to-work agreements further polarize workers and management, making labor conflicts in the future more likely, not less. I understand the board has a difficult job and I thank you for your service up until now. I also ask that your service not end on a low point in Galesburg's educational history. I ask rather that you take us to a more positive place, one in which community unit School District Number 205 is committed to working together with teachers, parents, and the community to offer a comprehensive and challenging education for every student. It is not too late. It is within your power and our kids want you back. It is a new time. We are not in the midst of the strike, but past it. Please do not stay in the decision of that moment, but take us to a place where we can move forward. Restoring the six days is the first step back.
Good evening, I'm Virginia Hallinga.
Hold on, hold on. Next will be Vince. I'm sorry.
Marola.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm Virginia Hallinga. I live in apartment one. And I have three daughters who benefited by going through the school system in Galesburg. I was speaking a little on special education in Galesburg schools. Incredible resources are poured forth on special education students of every level and ability within our school district. And members of our community support vast efforts to meet the needs of all students, some profoundly disabled, some able to manage assignments in schools, some able to function very well. This is my fifth year as a very happy substitute teacher, whose tasks are continually lightened by the tremendous efforts all teachers make in providing just what I need in the terms of lesson plans. Last week I was at Churchill Junior High with individual students, some of whom could not talk, walk, or write, but they communicated in their own ways and sometimes radiant smiles flashed over their faces when they realized that they were understood. Their lives are deeply supported by their regular teacher and the pair of professionals. A very long list of possible activities was posted above pretty boxes in the room, activities which help students organize their experience in the world, like matching colorful little socks or organizing different sizes of building blocks. It was an impressive list, demonstrating care and perception of individual needs on the part of the teachers and staff. The teachers and paraprofessionals in special education classes are universally impressive for their knowledge of what needs to be done, their caring, and patience. I do not think that teachers, or paraprofessionals, or students should be penalized in any way for standing up for their rights. I am simply voicing feelings I have all the time, feelings of appreciation for our people.
My name is Vince Marola. I live at Galesburg and, as has already been figured out, my name does not native Galesburg yet. I'm a proud transplant who moved to Galesburg two years ago because of the progressive history of this community. And as I stand before you tonight, I want to ask the question, a very simple question, and the question is, what is the message that we are sending to children in our district and in our community? What is the message we are sending them? When a school board is handed 1,200 signatures and listens to 20 people speak for over an hour, and the only public response is a lack of action and silence, what message are we sending our children when the voices that speak are met with stone-cold silence from the people who can do things? Those six days mean so much more than six days of education. It's a request of the community to try to start the process of healing, and I speak strongly for that. But I also stand up here tonight with some fear and some trepidation to open my mouth for an individual who I barely know. I come to speak on behalf of Jim Jacobs and his wife Hattie, and I ask the board to rescind his ban from school property. I know Jim through his actions, a few brief encounters, and his reputation, but someday I hope to know him as a friend. He is well-respected in the community, he's a nonviolent social activist, and he's a retiree of District 205. And I believe that he stands in a great cloud of witnesses, of people like Thoreau, Martin Luther King Jr., and Gandhi, voices of peaceful dissent who speak into injustice. Mr. Jacobs walked into a public building during public hours when the public was allowed to be in the building, and he was arrested because he said he would remain until the strike was settled. Mr. Jacobs has never been charged and is not being charged, so it came out of the court proceedings two weeks ago. And so I wonder, as an American Studies major, a Social Studies Education major, a product of a liberal arts education, a man who values democracy, I wonder what message are we sending our kids? We teach about democracy in our schools, we proclaim we are a democracy. We stand up and we say that all are created equal. We say that all voices in our community matter. We say that all voices have value. We say that all voices are important. What are we teaching our kids? What are we teaching our future leaders? When a voice of dissent speaks publicly, I would like to suggest, by the action and lack of action, by the ignoring of 1,200 signatures, by the ignoring of speakers, and by the banning of Jim and Hattie Jacobs, the message that we send our children is that when we exercise our rights to free speech in a democracy, our voice need not be heard. I think that the message we send is that dissent needs to be silenced. You have a chance to leave a legacy, a legacy tonight, and for future generations. What do we want to teach our kids about democracy? Do we want to teach them that dissent is to be silenced? Or do we want to teach them that when they stand up for it is right, and stand up for what they believe, that they will be supported and cared for and loved? It's about a whole lot more than 36,000 missing meals. It's about a whole lot more than my son getting ready for taking AP tests and missing school days. It's about a community losing money, silencing voices of dissent. What is the message that you who are charged with educating our kids sends when you silence voices like Jim and Hattie and you ban them from school property? What is the message you are sending? Think about it, act on it, restore them to their proper place where they belong. Thank you very much.
And I would like to speak to the board as a representative of the Galesburg Education Association. I would like to speak to you tonight concerning the teachers that we have that are in the pipeline. For those of you who are not familiar with the pipeline term, that are the teachers that have put in their irrevocable letters to retire within the next four years, and once that letter is turned in, they cannot take it back. And the reason I would like to talk to you about that is, during the return-to-work agreement between the Galesburg School District and the Galesburg Education Association, agreement was reached on the six dock days. And at that particular time, most people were looking at as that would basically be across the board, that every teacher would have the same consequence as for a loss of pay. Unfortunately, through further investigation, it is that the teachers that turned in their irrevocable letters that they would retire with the incentive that they'd be given if they would do that, actually would have to be paying a penalty for the remainder of their retirement, meaning that those teachers' salary would be reduced, and the teacher's salary is calculated based on their last four years, and they do an average of that. And with the dock days added in there, that salary is drastically reduced, therefore meaning that the teachers' pipeline would actually be penalized for as long as they're in retirement or basically for the rest of their life. So I would like to ask that you consider a possibility of having an amendment made to that so that every teacher would have the same consequences across the board, a paraprofessional, a woman, a straight-cread, that if we were to adjust the salary for TORS basing their incentive percentage on what salary they would make prior to those dock days, then the teachers would not be suffering additional expenses throughout the remainder of retirement. They would actually be suffering the same consequences as all teachers and paraprofessionals. This can be done. I have talked to a few of you about this idea, and we had checked with the teacher's retirement and asked if this was a possibility. And the responses we have from the teachers' retirement system is that it can be done and that there is no penalty for doing so. So I ask you tonight, please consider making it a cross-the-board consequence for teachers and paraprofessionals that doesn't continue on with our retirement pipeline people. And again, this can be done by simply putting the incentive percentage on their salary prior to dock days instead of after the dock days are deducted from their salary. I would be willing to meet, discuss, if you need further information on the idea, answer any questions that you have. And I'd also like to, this time, make sure that all board members and administrators know that I am available, to me, discuss, answer any questions that you have, and anything that I could possibly do to make this district a better district. I would be more than happy to take part in that. And again, I thank you for listening, and please consider the incentive being placed on their full salary. Thank you.
I'm Mary Arman. My husband and I have two kids at GHS. Sam is a senior and Grace is a freshman. But I have some other kids too. I'm not crying. For about eight years, I've been one of the adult leaders of our high school youth group at church. We meet on Sunday nights, and maybe it's just because it's Sunday night, but when we talk about what we need to pray about, it's always about pressure at school. It's about exams coming up, and the juniors and the seniors have it the worst. The kids in the AP class are really under a lot of pressure. And so I want to talk on behalf of our son Sam and all of the AP students. Sam has three AP classes this spring, and that's not unusual. A lot of his friends are in the same boat. I checked on the U of I website this afternoon, and the classes Sam is taking this spring, he's taking AP Physics, AP Chemistry, AP Statistics. When you look at what the maximum AP scores on those tests would be at the U of I, it's 22 semester hours. That's a semester and a half of college credit. That's thousands of dollars of tuition. So I'm really concerned about the psychological stress that these kids are under, even under the best of circumstances. But these aren't currently the best of circumstances. They've lost six days of instruction, which under the block system is 12 days of instruction. And so to intentionally put roadblocks in front of kids that are trying to achieve their dreams to prove a point, I don't understand it. We can do better. We have to do better for our kids. Thanks.
My name is Candy Webb. I am a citizen of Galesburg, a taxpayer, the president of the NAACP, a street mom, and that's important. And I hold myself fiscally responsible in my job that I also hold, an eight-hour position with a company in Peoria. I would feel if I were to take money that belonged to my company or to my family and give it away, I would feel that probably my family would definitely divorce me, but my job would absolutely fire if I would expect to be fired if I handed money away. And as volunteers, and I applaud everyone here who has volunteered, I volunteer dramatically in the community, but as volunteers, you came and became elected board members. You're fiscally responsible for making sure or stewarding the funds, making sure that the funds for the school district are dealt with appropriately. We trust you as citizens to make valid, valuable decisions when it comes to the dollars, right down to the pennies, that are used for our schools and for our children. I know that the strike created some very wavy situations, personality conflicts, whatever happened. I think that it's time to put all of those sandbox problems away at this point. I know that tensions ran high, and I think that everyone in this room realizes that tensions ran high, but we're over that now, and it becomes a dollar-and-cent measure that we're looking at when we're discussing giving away dollars that belong to our school district for whatever reason. Every school in this country needs more dollars, especially if it's a public school, could use more dollars. It does not make good fiscal sense to give money away. So unless, and I do have to agree with the gentleman who's still here in the green shirt whose name I believe was Vince, I need to understand because we're having a voters' meet-and-greet or a candidate meet-and-greet for the voters on Thursday for this election coming up. I need to be able to understand as NAACP president, how when several board seats come up for election early next year, how am I supposed to combat the questions that will come to me when they concern fiscal responsibility and this Restore 174 measure? This is as if I, as a homeowner, was told by the IRS that I was going to get some money and said, "You know what? Keep the money. I'm mad at somebody." That would be irresponsible and stupid on my behalf if I did that. Am I wrong? I'm not calling you stupid. I'm trying to make you understand how some of our residents are feeling right now. It does not make sense. So I understand that we have closed mouths at a school board meeting, but I would seriously suggest, for anyone who wants to stay on the board, and I think that we've got some great members of our board, that you come out with some kind of a statement or something and explain why this is happening, because no one gets it. It all just looks like people can't play together in the sandbox correctly. I'm going to say one other thing, and that is that as a street mom, which is a program that I am very passionate about because we need mentors for our kids, if one of our street dads, one, any one of them, in the midst of a fight between two children, took sides, if one of them said something wrong in taking those sides, it would not be left with stone bases. We would be asked to disband that entire program. And so if that's the way that we're expected to handle our children in school, then how is it that we are not expected to do that as adults? It does not make sense. And so I'm asking really for a statement of some sort to come from the Board of Education publicly to explain what is going on for several reasons. Number one, so that I can explain it to the voters who will be asking me questions in the long run for the next election. I am also asking for, on a more personal note, for Jim and Hattie Jacobs to be allowed to come back into, not just a school board meeting, but they are banned from any facility, is my understanding, in District 205. That gentleman was reading a prayer. If you want to know what he was reading, if you didn't know already, he was reading a prayer and praying for all of the teachers and all of you. And no, he's not being sent to jail, even though he was arrested, but he's banned from the one thing that he loved the most, and that is helping children. And that is just wrong. I don't think there is an explanation for that. You can give me rules, and you can give me anything you want, but there is, this is a small community, and pretty much everyone in it knows Jim. So I suggest, seriously, that you take a hard look at that before you continue with that decision. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mark Schreier. I live in GHS. I have a daughter in GHS and a son at Churchill. As the details of the contract emerged, it seemed that the board recognized that the most contentious issues were principally about trust. It's my belief that this is mostly what the strike was about. This belief is consistent with conversations I've had with many teachers, it's consistent with the substance of the central issues of the strike, and I'd hoped that the board had come to this belief as well. As the strike wound down, I felt good about the quality of the arguments made by the board on a number of issues, hopefully protecting the district from future legal issues as best they could while being sensitive to the current unneeds among the teachers. It was in this context that I was shocked by the board's return-to-work agreement and its decision not to restore the full school schedule. While I feel the most important reasons to restore the days to the calendar have to do with education and service, and I think they've been spoken to pretty well tonight, I'll confine my remarks to three other points. First, the lost state aid. Based on information from Regional Superintendent Harris and Superintendent Arthur, the district stands to lose just under half a million dollars in state aid. While much has been made of the net gain in the district's balance sheet because cuts in spending will exceed the loss of revenue, I find this line of reasoning, when used as a justification, very troubling. If this day-cutting argument has any merit, then why stop at 160? Why not 160, 150? At what point will we acknowledge that the cuts are damaging education? At what point will the community's taxpayers revolt? And while the district's balance sheet may see a net gain, this loss of state aid, as mentioned by others, still amounts to a loss of nearly a half million dollars to the economy of Galesburg and the surrounding region, having a direct negative impact on those employed by District 205, not all members of the GBA, by the way, as well as an indirect negative impact on community businesses. Second, I'd like to reiterate a point made previously, the teachers and the retirement pipeline. The return-to-work agreement spells out clearly that the penalty for teachers that have spent decades serving this community is not simply six dock days, but in some cases, a penalty that decreases their base salary and their pension by 3.3% over the rest of their lives. I think this is a law. Further, while I understand that there are board members much more knowledgeable on the law than I, it remains a concern to me that by treating the oldest teachers in such an extraordinarily punitive way and different from the rest of the dock population, the district opens itself to potential litigation on the basis of age discrimination. I could imagine the lawsuit is all the more likely since the district's internal mechanisms for handling grievances, such as age discrimination, as outlined in the board policy manual, involve the nondiscrimination coordinator and the complaints manager, both of whom play pivotal roles in establishing potentially discriminatory policy in the return-to-work agreement. I fear this decision has left the district unnecessarily exposed and hope it would be correct. Finally, a shortened calendar does nothing to improve the educational experience of our children, nor does it improve the economy of our community. It seems that the only rational motivation to maintain a shortened calendar is to serve as an economically punitive deterrent to the GBA membership so that the probability of future strikes might be minimized. Recently released documents seem to support this conclusion. If this reasoning were correct, I would still support restoring the calendar. Given an average of one strike per three decades, I disagree with strike aversion as a priority over education. However, even were I to prioritize strike aversion, I disagree with the strategy the board has chosen to follow. For the average teacher, I believe the strike was about fear and insecurity. This fear can be understood when looking at the assault on unions nationally, by listening statewide to rhetoric of candidates for office, and by understanding that locally, the economic outlook for our district is dire. The board has an opportunity to simultaneously work towards a good contract, ease fears, and turn the community's attention towards the hard road ahead it has chosen not to. Frankly, the board's work was not made easier by the stoking of fears or the misinformation distributed by union leadership. The board's work was not made easier by the very poor communication by the administration to the public about the board's positions and rationales leading up to and during the strike. The board's work was not made easier by the ad hominem attacks on its members in social media, if not in person. But while not easy, the board still needs to serve its But while not easy, the board still needs to serve its constituency to the best of its ability. The reality is that docking the days in order to be punitive has almost certainly undermined that rationale motivating the board. There was a great deal of demonstrably false information put out by the union leadership. In real time, there was precious little pushback from the board, and they should take responsibility for this. After the strike concluded, it was my hope that the union membership would spend a good deal of time reexamining the positions, strategies, and rhetoric of their leadership. I believe this retrospection, in concert with good board and administration communication, would have gone a long way towards the expressed goal of minimizing the chances of another strike anytime soon. Unfortunately, I suspect the punitive return-to-work agreement has only increased the level of fear, anxiety, and mistrust, and created an environment that only helps to galvanize the district. While I do believe the board did a good job in negotiating the substance, if not the politics, of the strike, I also believe that it did not perform at its best in generating the return-to-work agreement. A shortened schedule is bad for education, it's bad for the economy, and it's a bad strategy. I urge the board to reconsider its decision and restore the calendar, prioritizing what's best for our students and our community. Thank you for your time.